I'd like to do today is introduce Mr. Mike Mercer, our new District Two rep appointed by Councilman David Chenus. Welcome, Mr. Mercer. Determined quorum, we have all seven commissioners present today. Review of minutes, adoption of minutes from March the 12th.
I move that the minutes of March 12th be approved as amended.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Here are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Rezoning requests, we have three today. First one's rezoning request number 804. Property owners Clary L. and Edward T. Samuels, R1M from CG. That's a bit unusual.
Uh, yes.
Floor.
So on this one, you'll see on your map, there's a couple parcels here that are zone general commercial. I'm gonna go over to the GIS, you can kinda see a little better. There are these parcels here. You'll see that none of them have any real actual viable frontage for any real viable commercial development. Of course, these were received by the applicant. They're looking to be able to permit and use it for residential purposes. General commercial does not allow residential purposes. So they submitted an application, staff has no problem with it, staff recommends approval, and we believe this was kind of just done during the 2004 exercise where you can see a lot of these areas around 17 and Central just kind of got a bunch of general commercial, thinking that would've been a good commercial node. Most of it's still very heavily residential, and the existing settlements around this, as you can see, are a combination of manufactured and stick-built homes.
Is there anybody here would like to speak on behalf of the rezoning request? Do we have any public input during the posting?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners? I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
Second? Any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Rezoning request number...
Point of order, department and staff. Now, when we say aye or nay, are we supposed to turn this microphone on and then off for a max? Is that what we're doing? I just wanna make sure that it's recorded and heard.
Yes.
I believe that is.
Okay, I gotta be quick.
Okay, rezoning request number 805. Property owner North Star Pro LLC, and this one's going from R4 to CG. You have the floor.
Yeah, so you'll see on your screen, we have, really what we have is, we have two rezoning requests that are here now. We'll do them separately, but the first two are gonna be these parcels here that are R4 with a request to go to general commercial, and in the next one, we're gonna have these back two parcels here that are gonna go from R4 to general commercial. You'll see as it looks, it's kind of done, there's entry, it's, you wouldn't, if you were there, you wouldn't know it wasn't one parcel. It was kind of done as an office park, and it has parking and shared parking, access from Travelers Boulevard backed into Oakbrook Lane. But for the purposes of this rezoning request, it is for these two off of Travelers. Staff recommends approval. As you can see, the proximity of them to Old Trolley and the surrounding settlement, it will just kind of start squaring out that commercial development. Staff just simply views this as bringing already built infrastructure and uses into just zoning compliance. As a matter of fact, I'm surprised that there still are four. So staff recommends approval.
Again, for the record, is there anyone here that'd like to speak on behalf of the rezoning? Any input? Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, those say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
One abstain.
One abstention. Rezoning request number 806. Property owner Fran L. Grossman from R4 to CG.
So it's the same scenario. These are the back two parcels here that are part of that same office park off of Oakbrook. Staff takes the same position on them. It's, you know, it's built buildings, parking, uses for general commercial already established. One thing I will add that we would like to point to, when we do have these things, we go to R4 to general commercial, that helps staff a lot because we get sometimes things when people need business license, and R4 does have uses that have some professional components to it, but they're very limited. So general commercial will now allow these buildings and this existing asset for the county to operate as it should be operating.
Okay.
Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Again, for the record, anybody here on behalf of this rezoning? Any postings or input? Okay. Commissioners? I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it.
One abstain.
One abstention. Okay. Final plats, Carolina Bay Phase Two. Mr. Davis.
Yeah, so we brought this to you, you all conditionally approved this last year, July 11th, 2019, for the preliminary plan and plat. Carolina Bay got started quite some time ago, and then they got Phase One and Phase Two approved at the same time. Phase One started, things slowed down, but then they had to come back because they lost their vesting on the Phase Two. So they brought, came back, got their reapproval on their preliminary plan and plat, and they've been out there constructing since and finishing everything up. We're under their pressure, they, we were working on a performance bond for remaining construction, but it's our understanding now that they're pretty much 100% done, but I just wanna, you know, confirm that our recommendation is gonna be conditional on simply making sure they finalize what they need to do with the engineering department in relation to what's remaining and what needs to be bonded versus is it 100% done at this time? So staff's recommendation is to approve conditionally with satisfying the engineering department.
One condition.
One condition.
Okay.
The previous condition was removed, we've worked through that already and gotten rid of those minor plat comments since these reports went out.
Okay.
And the final plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat.
For the record, anybody here on behalf of Carolina Bay Phase Two? Okay, commissioners? Any discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just wanna note that that was a conditional approval.
Approval, yeah.
Engineering department requirement.
Correct.
As proposed, basically, yeah.
Okay.
Just one question, Mark. There will be one more section to close out then, right, on that?
More phases?
Yeah.
Yeah, we anticipate, if you look just to this, you can see a little stub out there. This here is all, you know, land that can be developed.
Yeah.
And as a part of Phase Two, a traffic study was done, and nothing triggered anything, but it was just at that threshold where when they go into Phase Three, they're probably gonna be looking at doing some off-site improvements. It's anticipated, at least.
Yeah, okay.
If I remember right, they're on the District Two side of Ridgeville, right?
I believe this is.
I think they are.
I remember that being something the developer was very happy about.
Okay. Any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Butternut Town Homes. Mr. Davis.
Yeah, so this here, if you recall, this is like a townhome development. Preliminary plan was approved. It's very simple in its length of just loading up with townhomes. It was done under the R4 over near Mallard Crossing. I can bring it up on the GIS if everybody needs an orientation of where that's at, I can do that, but, long story short, final plat conforms to the preliminary plat. It's pretty much identical. They did submit this, though, with a performance bond, and that performance bond is in place for review. We just don't have the official performance bond, so you'll see that's also a condition in that. So they have to order those, and it's kind of a moving part, so we don't wanna hold them up, place them on agendas if we don't have that official document. So staff recommends approval on the final plat with the conditions, I'm sorry, conditional approval with the conditions being receiving the official performance bond and finalizing some proper maintenance of drainage easement documentation, which will be located within the covenants and restrictions.
Two conditions.
Two conditions.
Okay. Commissioners? Entertain a motion?
I'd say approve. This is a final plat, right?
This is a final plat.
Yep, approve, move to approve.
And it...
With, under the conditions mentioned by the staff.
So that's a motion?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, any further discussion? Everybody's heard the motion with the two conditions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Here are none, the ayes have it. Okay, no preliminary plats today, no street name requests, no old business, and for new business, East Edisto.
Yeah, so this is something that you all had, this is a part of the East Edisto development. It's off of Beach Hill Road, just kind of past where the school is, you can kind of look on here to orient yourself. This is the existing settlement, this is the school center here, and this here is what was previously approved as a special district, SD5, within East Edisto. Planning Commission approved that, and they have since revised it. So anytime they do revisions, we have, we bring them back to you. So this is a revised, previously approved SD5 plan. The difference is with this one is, they kind of had a little bit more time to kind of hone in, you know, I pulled this particular slide up because you can see this one really focuses on some of the road sections that are gonna be built within this, and they're kind of color-coded, as you can see through the plan. It's gonna have a really nice entry feature, some ponds. This will be a gated, age-restricted community. Everything in there will be private roads. Now, this isn't, remember, this is, this is not an infrastructure plan, this is not a preliminary plat or a final plat. This is just that overall plan that they need to get approved by the planning commission for them to submit some of the documents to actually go to construction. This is the only document you see at the planning commission level. Everything else is done at a staff level.
Mark, you said earlier that this is revised.
This is a revised...
I think you said the planning commission revised it.
No, this is something that's been in front of you prior.
Okay, so we, so we've seen this before.
Yep, yep. So this is something that's been in front of you prior, that was approved. It had a condition on it, basically them finalizing the traffic study. That was a part of this and the whole five-year update, that's a requirement of the development agreement. Since that time, as they were working towards removing that condition, that traffic study has been fully vetted by the Public Works Department and SC DOT, and it has been improved, and it was incorporated into the five-year Summers Corner traffic study update. I can go into more detail if you have questions on that, but really, the only revisions to this, it's unlike some of the other East Edisto stuff. It really just establishes it being an SD5 district, which allows them to build an age-restricted community, and then in that process, you'll see some language in there that refers to the SD4. This little green area right here is what is the SD4. Since then, they've realized that that is where they wanna place a pump station to pretty much serve this and, and some of the other areas. This pump station is actually gonna help allow this original settlement back here finish out because they were having some sewer issues. This will serve that remaining development over there as well. So there's really, there's not much difference minus the changes to the plans. They got a little bit more detailed with the road sections, so that's why I put this slide up. Before, it was just very vanilla in the road sections, meeting the minimum standards of what the code required. I've very adamantly tried to get them to do a little bit more than that. Staff is getting there with the new owner of the property, and, you know, this, this is kind of a testament to some of the ground staff has gained, getting them to understand that, seeing these very detailed road sections at this stage of the game.
I have a question to the traffic study over here.
Sure.
Is there any access other than 61 to the, to this plan?
Uh, no, as of right now, the main access will come in off of 61 through here. There is, I'm gonna go to, real quick, just bear with me one second, I'm in the pocket over here. So now I'm going to that aerial now, so if we're looking at this, this is pretty much the land right here. If we go back right there, so that right there is the bend, here's that parcel, that's it here. Currently, that access will come in through here, but as a long-term plan, there's Clayfield Trail, which comes off of Summers Drive. We have plans that are currently under review to extend this road up this way, which will then tie into this neighborhood at some point in time, so we would expect there to be an access point off of 61, as well as an access point to Clayfield Trail. This road will eventually, it stops about here, will continue and connect into Delamar Highway. So the ultimate plan is that there would be two ways in and out of, well, mostly East Edisto as a whole, but specifically that, that particular development.
Okay, thank you.
And those, and those components are all included in the traffic study as trip distributions.
Thank you, I was just thinking in terms of the impact of the traffic on 61 now, that's it.
Oh, I'm, oh, well, I mean, it's, 61, you know, is not a road to manage this type of stuff. I mean, everybody knows that, but...
I've got a follow-on question to that. The traffic study is complete, correct?
Correct.
What did it show?
So the traffic study was done individually for just this, and then when they did the five...
That was a rhetorical question.
Oh, okay.
Of what the traffic study showed, and is 1,200 houses gonna be built in there, if I understand correctly?
Sure, so they, they did the traffic study, I think it was 11, let me take a look, um, yeah, 1,000, yep, 1,055 units is what they did the traffic study under. The area of the mass you see here, they're anticipating approximately 750 units, with the idea of expanding this special district maybe a little further down here. The reality is, is they wanna do this, they wanna see how sales go out there, and if they, and if, and they're kind of meeting certain benchmarks for them, they're gonna expand the age-restricted offering out here in East Edisto.
So how can we build all those units and there's no impact on 61? Traffic-wise?
Oh, there will be an impact. No, there's...
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah, there's gonna be an impact. The only thing I can say about...
What does the traffic study say?
Oh, the traffic study, uh, I mean, I can't speak to it as good as maybe the Public Works Director could, but it basically spoke to, for instance, you know, this is just at this point, you know, there's not a lot of rooftops. It's once the rooftops get in there, they start generating traffic. So it was an anticipated trip count where it would involve like signalization of this intersection, improvements to the road of 61 from here to serve the entry to development, which will occur, that's a part of this. They'll have to do some widening and some turn lanes, it's associated, to kind of continue some of that up that way, and it did look at, so that was just specifically to that one, but the overall five-year study started looking at some other components, as well as, as it works its way down to Delamar Highway, back up, and how it ties into where those widening stopped, and approximately how far into the future, future Delamar Highway improvements might be required.
Once again, my point in the whole thing is, we look at things in isolation, and we're still doing that. I mean, if you look at that area down there, with Summers Corner, the ponds, stuff going in, possibly in give-ins, you know, you gotta start looking at it in the aggregate.
So we're loading up that road.
Yeah, absolutely, without a doubt.
And...
And the traffic studies worthless.
Well, the traffic study, so the, the process, remember that whole process we changed on the traffic studies, that they now go towards an independent, well, a consultant that the county has, I don't wanna use that, that, they kind of get in on, and then the county, the engineer, the Public Works Department decides based on what it is and who it goes to, so they're really kind of working for us, but the developer pays for the study. So that was a big step forward to address that exact comment that you made regarding traffic studies, that the county has been using to approve developments probably for the many decades in the past. So we're hoping that helps make them more honest, and, but remember, this is a development agreement. So development agreement is a contract of development, and that development agreement is very clear on responsibilities of the county, and what their requirements are for future improvements, and what the requirements are by the developer, and what those improvements would be, and that really is what we have to adhere to, as long as the development agreement is in place.
So what's, who's gonna be responsible for the improvement between Summers Drive and up to the access into this neighborhood? You were talking about there was gonna be improvements, sounded like somebody was talking in terms of widening the road or improving the road of some sort?
In this area?
Yes.
Summers Drive? So this part of Summers Drive was improved as a part of this original up to Clayfield, and then right about here is kind of where it goes back to the old section. So as East Edisto works its way back down...
No, no, wait a minute, you're, no, I may be clear. I'm concerned about from Summers Drive on Beach Hill Road.
Okay, right here.
Up toward 17A. You indicate, I thought I understood you to say there was gonna be some improvements, possibly widening in there.
From here?
No, he's talking about from gnarly Oak Lane up to the intersection with 17, correct?
Right. Who's gonna be responsible for that?
I'm, I'm still trying to get where, so help me out.
North of 17A.
So 17A is up here.
So you're talking about Summers Corner or Summers Drive between 17A?
And Beach Hill.
Road.
Yeah, so...
No, not that road, the other road to the left of that.
This one?
That one.
Okay, so, yeah, so this one here, they're, up to the entry points, let me go back to here. So right there, that entry point, this is where that is, there's some improvements with the school through here. This will have and require improvements as a part of the development to get to that access point for the...
Question was, who's paying for it?
Well, yeah.
Oh, that's gonna be done by the developer.
I think the question was from there northwestward to 17, because that little bit of improvement right there ain't gonna do a whole lot.
Saying from here to here?
Well, basically, what I'm thinking in terms of here is, is that improvement area that you're talking about is gonna be like attaching a two-inch hose to, to a quarter-inch hose and work both ways backwards. So, I mean, what does that do for the traffic prior to Summers Corner?
Can, can I also point out something?
Sure.
That I'm pretty sure there's a Publix that's going in across the street from that location as well.
That's current areas.
So there's a Publix, there is also the bus loop for both Sand Hill Elementary and Rollings Middle School of the Arts, which is literally right next door to this main entrance to this neighborhood. I think I said this in the first one, when it came around, that with that entrance being so close to that other one, and now knowing that Publix is going to finally move forward, that is going to be, it's gonna be a nightmare right there. That is too much traffic in such a small little area.
It's gonna be a mega-central avenue.
It is.
Can we get somebody from the traffic study group to come in and brief us on this area and what's going on?
Yeah, was there maybe like on the five, I mean, the five-year update, the ink is still drying, like they just, because that was a requirement development agreement, so we could have somebody from the engineering department come in and kind of give you a brief update on that five-year...
Yes, because we're already behind on roads in the county, and it's only gonna get worse.
Go ahead.
Um, so, really, this is just paperwork, we can't do anything about it. All the contracts have been signed, so it's gonna happen, whatever we say.
That is correct.
And there's, I mean, we can't ask for any more?
I mean, under, everybody here understands contracts, it's a development agreement. County entered a development agreement in 2012. I, I've read it many times.
So, Mark...
And it's, you know...
So, so what, I think what, what you're getting at is, is that you have a development agreement, it was approved, everyone signed off on it, and you've got a traffic study, and the traffic study says these improvements need to be made, and you said by the developer.
Well, it depends, some, some are by the developer and some will be on the, on, on the county, based off of the requirements of the, of the development.
Of the development.
When they come on...
So, so, so the, so the, so the die is cast on how those improvements are gonna more or less be made, based on the traffic study?
Correct.
That's, that's...
Yeah, I mean, in a way, when you have a development agreement, I just want the planning commission members to understand that, everything you're saying and, and your concern out here is absolutely shared by staff on traffic, roads, the Publix, you know, but when you're given a development agreement, and it's a contract, if the county doesn't uphold its end of the contract, I promise the county will get sued.
Yeah.
And they will prevail. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's an existing 2012 contract, East Edisto, and...
I think, I think we understand that.
Okay.
Everybody understands contracts. I just wanted to make sure that that's what was going on, I'm, I wasn't sure, like, like some other questions, but that's, so we've got a development agreement, we got a traffic study, the development agreement addresses, will it help address the traffic studies, I think?
Yeah, and also, too, that traffic study, the way they're developing it, structured, so as a part of it, it's a five years, every five years or a certain amount of rooftops, I think it's how it's oriented, so we get a new one, like they have to do one and update it every five years, so that's a good thing in a development agreement, and so it really just kind of addresses it, let's just say like nothing started developing from here on out, well, they're not gonna do another one in five years if nothing new occurred, so there's some, some language in there for that. But as a part of it, every five years, a new traffic study for East Edisto and Summers Corner has to be done and reviewed by the Public Works Department, as well as South Carolina Department of Transportation. All, both, both those agencies, who are professionals in this, thoroughly review it, and the latest five-year plan has been signed off by both parties. So, yeah, I can, I can bring the Public Works Director in here, if you all would like maybe a little presentation on East Edisto and how that five-year update, if that's something...
I'd like to know about the traffic study.
Yeah, the traffic study, the five-year, yeah.
Know what's going on?
Yeah.
With that?
One more question. Where does this sewer go? Ask me. Where does the sewer go? They, I mean, that's in Dorchester County's plan to deal with.
Mm-hmm.
He's, they've got that figured out.
Mm-hmm. Well, they're working towards it.
Well, we had him in here the other, a couple months ago, and he said, getting kind of slammed, capacity.
So, yes, as a part of a development agreement, when you make a development agreement, there's obligations of the county to provide capacity at the taxpayer's dime, or the user's dime. I believe there's some rates about to increase real soon, to help them get some more money to do some...
Well, that's where that SD4 is, that's that pump station.
Yeah. I mean, that's why, that's what kind of came in, so they kind of are doing a little bit more on the pump station.
Yeah.
How it's gonna distribute throughout.
They're just gonna increase the pressure on the sewer, that's all.
Where are we?
Yeah, so, you know, staff recommends approval of the revised SD5 and SD4 plan.
No conditions, and they just recommend approval, okay? Commission? I'd entertain a motion?
I, I would move to approve it, based on the information we've got, and I would like to see the traffic study, so we can kind of be thinking in the future as to what's coming, and, and, you know, maybe, maybe you could refresh us on East Edisto, it's been eight years since we looked at it, so I'd make a motion to approve.
With those conditions?
I mean, that's just a comment, I mean, I don't need conditions, I don't think there's much we can do but look at it and study it.
I would like to throw in another comment on that, if we can, if we can talk about traffic studies.
Yeah, could, could... You, you wanna get a second, Ed, Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we can discuss...
We don't have a second yet, do we have a second?
I don't have a second on my motion at all, so...
Second?
I'm gonna...
Now, go ahead.
Okay. I'm thinking about this traffic study in the East Edisto development, and we're looking at one, one portion up there, now what about all of this stuff going down Summers Drive? All these, all these side roads and new development roads going down there, that, that still's feeding in from 61 as well?
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I, I, it's very important for people to understand that Summers Corner, which is this portion through here approximately, rounds kind of that general Staff has estimated that by the time they're done, there very well could be upwards of 5,000 units in there based off of the development agreement approved by the county and the allowable densities.
That's why, that's why my point was, we gotta start looking at things in the aggregate and not individually.
Yes, sir, I concur, I concur with that.
And the five-year study does do that. And so my question on that is, do you, would you all like that as a part of this or a workshop?
What's the pleasure of the commission?
Cause you know, we're, we can get into more detail during workshops.
I mean, this is the biggest deal that's ever come to Dorchester County and I'm happy doing it however you wanna do it. I, I don't know that there's a lot we can change because there's a contract, but we can certainly try to understand it, get re, re, real allocated to it so that we understand what our obligations are as a county and then as a commission, we can, you know, sometimes you go and ask for something and you can get something, you know? But you don't get nothing if you don't ask. So I'd be okay with just talking about it, seeing, so we understand what we got. The other thing is, is, uh, fi, just as we're talking, 5,000 units is a lot of units. Um, it, it takes a long time to build a lot of units. I mean, you look at the ponds, we approved that, what, '03 or '04 or something? And they were talking about a cinnamon bear being out there, so we shouldn't approve that because there was a bear living out there, if I remember that, right here in this room. So, you know, and I look at the ponds now and it's, it's really grown up a lot, but that's been, you know, that's been a long time. And, uh, and, and, and it's just, you oughta, maybe you oughta say, well, how many units are out there and how long are it take those to come up? And, and, you know, so we can get a grasp of what we're looking at, like a big picture, you know?
Yeah, I think it's something for the East Estesso Development Agreement, when, when we say these things, we can project, just when we take, you know, when, you know, staff kind of geeks out on it, project what density is, put that into how many lots something can be yielded with a particular thing, we just kind of go out there. This is a 50-year development agreement, so it's in place for a while. So it, there wasn't, you know, when it kind of came in, it was supposed to be more of a, well, yes, it's here idea, but at least kind of to Chairman Carter's point is, it's very comprehensive and instead of it being hodgepodge by individuals, you're gonna have one main document regulating it. We had, we had one developer, they sold a portion of it. So, yeah, staff's gonna have to deal with a little bit of hodgepodge as some of those areas might sell off, but it's still regulated by that one main document.
Okay. Okay, what we wanna do is, we wanna understand the traffic studies that have been done and how they fit in with that whole area in the aggregate.
Yeah.
Now, do you wanna do that in a workshop, do you wanna do it?
Yes.
I prefer a workshop.
I prefer a workshop. I think there are several commissioners that were here when this came about, but there's new folks that it would benefit greatly.
I agree. Book them.
All right.
Okay. We've still got a motion and a second out there, is there any further discussion? Hear or none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Opposed.
We have one opposed, did we have an abstention on this one?
No reason for me to abstain, I don't know much about any of this other, we approved it, so. And by the way, as, as, East Estesso is, I believe it started out as 70,000 acres because it takes in Charleston County.
Yeah, 72,000 acres.
And, and, and so a piece of it's in Dor, I mean, this, this thing is, um, that's why it's good to have this workshop, let's look at the big picture here.
Runs all the way down here.
Okay.
It's all the way down to Drayton Hall, I believe, almost to Drayton Hall.
Yeah, I mean, everything you see kind of in that shade right there, you see that kind of marking there, that's East Estesso, all the way down through here and up through here.
All right, let's move along. Waiver modification requests for Indian Springs. Mr. Davis?
So you've had a couple of these come through, again, uh, oftentimes we do with these when they come to you at the preliminary plan or plat approval. Uh, so we got a, as an option for the TRC, they submitted a conceptual drawing, uh, it kind of looked similar to this and they had some comments back. Um, and from that, one of them was basically maximum cul-de-sac length, I think we've had maybe three or four of these in the last year as a part of it. And what they're requesting before they really kind of go into full-blown engineering of the site is this is back to the planning commission has the authority to grant modifications slash waivers to the land development standards to reduce the minimum requirement or to alter that requirement. So for a cul-de-sac, as you can see, there's what, you know, 14 lots here? Well, the traffic generated from this is pretty much brings it down to the lowest possible road standard. That would be a 250-foot cul-de-sac length. Uh, if you look on the road stations, you see here, it's about a 550 cul-de-sac length. Um, this is where 250 is right here, so it's about, in the purple here, it's about 358 feet back from that point. So they're requesting the planning commission before they go in and, and start getting into their preliminary plan and really, uh, invest that money for you all to approve that relief for them as a matter of this. And we, we would anticipate probably within six months that you're gonna see this come before you as a preliminary plan approval. Staff doesn't have any concerns with it, um, but ultimately it's your all's choice whether or not you're okay with allowing the land development regulations to be modified. Staff does not have that authority.
Are those, are those townhouses?
No, these are gonna be single-family, this is zoned R2. So this is gonna be an R2 development, you can see right here, this is about the minimum lot size right there, 7,500 square feet.
Are we establishing a precedent or has we done this before?
No, this has been done in the last...
The cul-de-sac?
Cul-de-sac length, yeah, I mean, Russ, you probably, it's probably on your mind, we've done this like four or five times in the last year?
Okay.
In January, I think.
Yeah, I mean, in my mind, I feel like it's coming up a bunch. It's cause staff is, you know...
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna have to...
Will say properly regulating it now.
I, I didn't notice this was on the agenda, I'm gonna have to recuse myself on this one as far as voting, but I would like to make a comment if that's all right. Um, and I won't take part in any discussions, um, this property has already been purchased and closed, okay? They already bought the property. So I have no dog in the fight at this point, but I'm still gonna abstain, but just if y'all remember, some of y'all, that Mr. Harland Joy from Atlanta came here maybe 10 years ago and he had property here and he wanted to put, um, some apartments on it. And everyone in Indian Springs that lives in Indian Springs was in this gallery and curious, and I remember, and they said, "We don't want another project down the street from us, don't do this." So Mr. Joy went back to Atlanta, he's a, I think he's a disc jockey by trade or something, he's a real nice man. So he, he went back to Atlanta and I never thought much more about it. Anyway, I got a call to put it on the market a couple of years ago or something. And, um, I told him, I said, you know, there's no chance it wasn't gonna go multi-family. So he's gone single-family with it, found someone to put single-family in there. And he's already closed and gotten his money and gone, but that's the history of this. Um, and there's another tract corresponding on the other side of this boulevard, Indian Springs Boulevard here, that, that's the same exact size and I imagine you'll see somebody come forward with that at some point. So, um, but anyway, I just wanted you to know the history that it's, this was a, many people wanted to put multi-family there, the neighborhood was against it and, and so the guy just went with the current zoning, not trying to push the envelope for, for more density, so.
Yeah, so it's currently zoned R2, it's not, there's no rezoning and they're just doing by-rite development of what's allowed there. Just as a part of that, there's a land development regulation regarding that road length that, uh, they would need you all to relax, uh, for them to do this design. And in the detailed report, I mean, I can say a part of this is, this is 17 right here and this is Indian, and, um, I know Russ, you, you'll probably be on that, DOT, so they, let's say they went up here and they did this and maybe they kind of tied in right here, DOT doesn't want them to do that. They want them to stay and go in and go into Indian Springs and just keep a cul-de-sac. So they're kind of, you're kind of caught between a catch-22 on that about how they would be able to possibly come back out onto 17.
Okay, so staff recommendation?
Yeah, staff, staff doesn't have any issue with it.
Okay. Commission? Entertain a motion?
Uh, move to approve and just wanna note that I appreciate staff's bullets in our report to kind of speak to each point of concern, so thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, well, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hear or none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Okay, now...
Abstain, that's true.
Yep, we got it. Your third abstention of the day.
My year, I'm saying.
Now we got Mr. Formasano, did I butcher that?
No.
Yeah. Uh, Director Dorchester County Emergency Management Department, and we're gonna hear about the hazard mitigation plan. The floor is yours.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak today, something, uh, not related to infectious disease. It's a nice change. So, we are in the process, or we're kind of wrapping up the process, we're updating the 2018 hazard mitigation plan for the county. Uh, the plan actually goes back to 2005, that was the first year that the, that was the first time the, the county developed a plan, it was actually a Berkeley-Dorchester plan at that time, carried over to, uh, the 2010 update, which was again a multi-county plan. And then we separated ourselves in 2015 to have a standalone county plan, we did it in-house, we didn't contract it out with the council of governments. So the update cycle is every five years, it was approved on October 27th, 2020, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about the process for updating the plan and some of the findings and offer up an opportunity to ask any questions. Uh, so those are just underneath the, um, the first bullet, those are just some of the key activities that have happened, uh, throughout this update process, I'll go into a little more detail. So this is roughly a, a two-year, probably actually about a two-and-a-half-year process, going back to June of 2018, I engaged the, the county, or not the county planning team, but it's actually a, a multi-jurisdictional planning team, um, to start talking about what the process was going to look like. And then actually our first meeting was in the fall of 2018. So, um, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the hazard vulnerability assessment, but just wanted to give you an idea of kind of like how far we've come over the last, oh, couple of years. This is basically the planning process in a snapshot. A huge part of the hazard mitigation plan is understanding the, in this case, the natural hazards, our risk and our vulnerability to natural hazards throughout the county. Um, we do a survey with our county and municipal partners to offer up any, um, comments regarding their capabilities assessment. We collectively agree on the community goals and objectives, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And then we have, uh, each jurisdiction has their own mitigation action plan. So I have, uh, kind of summarized here the 11 community goals, there are accompanying objectives for some of these, I'm not gonna read every single one of them, um, you know, starting with that first one of minimizing the threat from hazards. Again, when we're talking about hazard mitigation, we're talking about reducing or eliminating the impacts from natural hazards. So those 11 community goals really have not changed since the 2015 update. Um, we have made some adjustments to some of the, uh, accompanying objectives and the plan, the draft plan right now is available on the Dorchester County website, if you go to emergency management, then to emergency plans, you'll find, uh, the hazard mitigation plan, the draft plan available to you. So I talked a little bit about those action plans, the jurisdictional action plans, but, uh, this'll make sense here in a minute, but each action is, has a correlating, uh, action category, so those are the six action categories that you see that are part of these jurisdictional plans. And this is just a snapshot of page one from the county's plan. So these action plans, as you can see, are a matrix, um, that, we identify the category, details regarding what that activity or that action looks like, what hazards we're addressing, uh, the responsible agencies or the stakeholders, potential funding sources, and then there's that relationship between the community goals and objectives and that, um, fourth column from the right, and I'm, actually, I'm still working on a couple of those new ones, those bottom three there are new action items. So we're still, you know, this is, again, this is still in the draft process here, uh, whether it's a priority or what level of priority it is, so low, medium or high priority, um, with some of these regarding status and then a timeframe, is it something that's ongoing, is it a long-term, is it a short-term item? Those are all things that we take into consideration, uh, within the action plan. So this comes into play, you know, there are reoccurring federal grant programs for hazard mitigation, flood mitigation assistance, pre-disaster mitigation, uh, after a disaster we have the hazard mitigation grant program, and so jurisdictions can look to, uh, their action plans and kind of, you know, use that as an opportunity to identify some, um, potential grant opportunities or not grant opportunities, but projects, uh, you know, to, to take under once these funds are available. So the, we, we took it one step forward with public involvement for the 2020 update. In 2015, um, you know, we did these public presentations, in most cases, even when the public was invited, we didn't have a whole lot of, of great turnout, I guess. But we took it one step further this time and we did a community survey, so we did that through the county website and we made that survey available to the public. I think we had probably somewhere in the, the neighborhood of 60 to 70 responses. Uh, those were, that, that second bullet there is kind of a summary of the, the questions that were part of the survey and, um, you know, some of the comments on local government steps to mitigate future disasters were, as you could imagine, they were, a lot of them, they were about flooding. So in addition to that, um, addition to the survey, uh, various press releases, social media posts directing, the public to, the draft plan, and we have received some feedback, you know, they've just been told, you know, if you have comments to the plan to just send it to the emergency management department's email address. And so we have had a handful of comments, um, and that's kind of where we stand right now. Uh, in the 2015 update, I made this presentation, uh, at county council and then at our municipal council meetings, but, um, you know, I was slated to do those probably about six weeks ago and obviously we've had a little bit of an interruption. So now I'm gonna get into those hazard vulnerability assessment maps. Just to give you an idea, um, when we do the hazard analysis, uh, we're looking at every single natural hazard and that is kind of the meat and potatoes of the update. So what you're looking at here, we not only look at the hazards, the occurrences, we collect all that data, but we also obtained some data from the CDC regarding social vulnerability. When we did the 2015 update, we were able to get, uh, through, uh, the US Census, we were able to get census block data, that's not available, there's, everything that, that's available right now is still 2010 from the census. Uh, so obviously, uh, that's not gonna be incorporated in this plan. The next best thing for us was to use the CDC's, uh, social vulnerability index. So you see a few changes there, uh, primarily to the western half of the county, there's kind of a huge chunk there from, uh, from the forks at, at 178 and 78 to the west where, um, in 2010, that was essentially categorized as a high vulnerability risk and has since been expanded to very high. For your viewing pleasure, our risk to earthquakes, we have them, uh, often, more often than people think, usually they're pretty small, they're not really felt, it's probably been somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, about two and a half or three months since we saw anything significant. I say significant, really I'm talking about a 2.0 to where maybe a few people that are close to the epicenter said they felt some of the shaking or they heard something, but that's the earthquake activity, um, up until December of, of, uh, 2019. And then that other layer that we add in there was the, uh, liquefaction susceptibility. This is a new product, this is a new feature to the plan, to those, uh, to these HVA maps and, uh, this has really become relevant because, you know, going back to the 2015 floods, you know, we had three consecutive years of, of flooding and in some cases like the homes that are along Eagle Creek, um, you know, they flooded three consecutive years, they're severe repetitive loss properties. And, um, this is using NFIP data to identify, it's a heat map, obviously, uh, but to identify, uh, where we've had the most concentration of repetitive loss claims. Same type of map, a heat map, and this is just an example, uh, for Hurricane Irma, uh, the, uh, you know, some of the damages that were reported and where most of the damages were. So you see the Oak Brook area, we had the most damage reported in that area. Same with Hurricane Matthew. Uh, 2018 FEMA finally updated our disaster flood insurance rate maps, uh, that's the, that's the layer that you're seeing there, I'm sure many of you are familiar with this And this is taking, um, a couple layers, including the social vulnerability in... And this is taking, um, a couple of layers, including the social vulnerability index and just kind of lay, layering that over top of it. And kind of wrapping up here, these are just the remaining items that we have, uh, to continue to receive and process any public comments, uh, through the end of this month. And then we'll start, um, you know, kind of wrapping it up and, and rolling it up to the state level. It, we'll prob, I, I anticipate that the state will do a good job of scrubbing it. And, um, we'll probably go through another month or so of some, some additional revisions. It'll go to FEMA. Same thing will happen, but I mean, we're in a really good position right now. We're not gonna, our plan's not going to expire or anything like that. So we're in good shape. Any questions for me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mario, back in, um, 2014, 15, when we had that ice storm.
Mm-hmm.
You came up to the western end of the county and you did a good job. We appreciate all the help that you gave us. Being scattered out, once you can get people mobile, um, it really helps out. And hopefully there's some kind of coordination between the power companies and the road department to help get the road clear so the folks can put the power back on.
Absolutely.
Secondly, um, since 2014, um, in 2014, we had a lot of volunteer firemen in the western end of the county. That's not the case anymore. So I hope you took that into account whenever you did your plan.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Yeah, we, we, um, you know, that 2014 was the first disaster that we'd seen in the Low Country of that magnitude, probably, you know, almost going back to Hurricane Hugo. That was the most debris. That's still the most debris that we've seen since Hurricane Hugo in Dorchester County. It was close to 200,000 cubic yards of vegetative debris. But, but most definitely, the partnerships, uh, that we have with, um, the faith-based community and other civic organizations and the municipalities to all come together to address, uh, volunteer issues and other relief matters is, uh, it's come a long ways.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Um, well, Mario, when did you start with the county?
Uh, September of 2011.
So I'm not 100% sure if you brought all this with you.
Microphone.
Oh, is it not on? Oh, it's on. Um, if you brought all this with you, or if God sent you here at the right time, but I hear nothing but positive feedback, uh, from your professionalism and how you take care of this county. So thank you. Keep up the good work.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I read this plan in detail and it's one of the best pieces of work I've seen done at a county level. And, uh, you and your staff did a good job.
Thank you.
Damn good job.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, just a question for the lady in the back. You were raising your hand. Was his microphone not on or you, you had to turn it up though? That's the one in those debates last year that you couldn't hear the guy talking. It's that mic you got right there, I'm telling you.
That's why they.
That's, that's an equipment failure.
All right. Quick question. Where are we on the big mass rezoning? The next batch?
Uh, so we took the Knightsville, Plansville area to, that's moved forward to council. It's had first reading. It was scheduled for second reading last week, um, but because the public wasn't able to attend the meeting, they decided to hold off on second reading in the public hearing until such time as councils open back up to the public again. We are prepared to move forward with the next round right after that, but we don't want to overload council with two at the same time. So you probably will get that in July as long as things continue to open up. But, you know, if things close back down.
How many properties are we talking about? It's not as many as the last one, right?
It will be, but the main difference is that most of this next round is already developed single-family residential neighborhoods. So it's not property that's large tract that could be developed for something else. I mean, you're talking about, um, the neighborhoods in North Charleston and right off of Old Parlor. Yeah, Old Parlor.
Okay.
So they're, they're already developed single-family residential neighborhoods.
And when we do the next one, then how many after that do we have remaining?
Uh, I think in total, between the two, we have about 1,500 remaining, I want to say, or maybe 1,300 remaining. So it'll probably be about 700 in the next round. Most are already developed single-family residential though.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Any other questions for the staff? Mr. Davis, anything?
Uh, we did get one thing. Um, well, it's on, it will be on our public comment. So wait till we get there.
Okay, public comment?
Uh, we got something here from Carl Hudson, kind of relation, it's going to be small, what you just heard there, but, um, his comments where we got this, I think Jennifer over the email.
Yeah, I came through the public comment.
Public comment for it. "When it rains heavily, uh, portions of Parsons Road get flooded." So if you could have been here today, that's what you would have commented on.
Okay. That's Parsons Road?
Yeah, Parsons Road.
That's Parsons Road's in the town of, is that, is that the town? It's along the, behind, behind the Woodlands, right?
It's, yeah, exactly in that area.
Okay. Is that a state road, by the way?
Actually, I think some of Parsons is a county.
Is county, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Here or none? Meeting is adjourned.